Six and Jenna, go ahead and next slide. Again, as I've referenced, you know, the conversation is larger than just the desire to extend the sales and use tax, but really four component parts. So an extension of the master development agreement, which I've referenced, which is set to expire this next year. Embedded in that is the desire to extend the sales and use tax for infrastructure investment. Third is clarity by council on mineral rights and the rules associated with those mineral rights. And then last is commercial development. So next slide. We took the next, you know, as we've shared with you individually, we've taken the steps to prioritize from our perspective, you know, getting the master developer agreement extension done is again making sure that the fundamentals of our defined roles and responsibilities continue to play themselves out. That allows us to really then to tackle the challenges that are in front of us collectively. Within that is an extension again of the sales and use tax. And we're going to show you a picture here in a minute of a comprehensive map that we've worked on together with city staff. And then finalizing the city's oil and gas regulations, because as this has gone on, that has affected the ability for not just us, but other developers to fundamentally plan. And in some respects, it's beginning to affect the ability to finance future development. Next slide. So, you know, we've heard a lot about, you know, and you've heard a lot from us about this desire to extend the sales and use tax. And one of the things we did this last year or this year is to put together a shared understanding of both roadway as well as drainage improvements. And this is a map that was developed based on shared conversations among city staff, public works, all the kind of leaders within various departments that represent again, both roadway improvements list was identified, which is the, you know, kind of hard to read box to the side, but it adds up to over 151 million in improvements. And just to give you a sense of scale, I know there's a lot of interest in getting Chambers Road improved north of 104th up to 112th. That's about a $15 million project, give or take. And the intent would be is obviously these are not just improvements for the benefit of reunion, but for regional moving people, cars, bikes, et cetera, water in a regional way through this, through this area. So we'd love to continue the partnership we've had. And I think the one that we can speak to is 112th Avenue, which we've been wrapping up. And I think that has been a very, very positive partnership and one that's been really transparent. And the goal would be is to continue that relationship by extending the sales and use tax agreement. So next slide. You know, policy issues, obviously, again, the other is around commercial mixed use development. And we certainly talked a lot over since we started about the reunion center. And what I think is interesting about the reunion center is not only does it have the potential to benefit reunion as a community, but again, if we think about it as a regional benefit because of E470, 104th Tower Road, Highway two, et cetera, that kind of surround the reunion community, it's easy for folks from a lot of different places to get to this site or this area pretty easily. And, and so, you know, one of the things that we've certainly heard loud and clear, heard loud and clear from day one, from not just council members, but residents in particular reunions, they love the, the concept of the reunion center with the sports amenities and the Grange and all that, so long as they don't have to have additional taxes paid for it. So with that basic idea in mind, you know, we've been, we have been exploring a true public private partnerships where you would essentially create a market by bringing in private development and capture the sales tax and revenues that would be associated with bringing visitors to the site for let's say a baseball or softball game, or folks staying at a hotel, or folks regionally coming to the Grange, the food hall, capture those dollars as a way to pay the revenue bonds and operate the site. And so there's a whole series of agreements, the sports entertainment, the creation of an authority to jointly manage that site. We've talked a lot with city about the study of a land swap. And then individual development deals would have to be created through private development around the food hall, the hotels, retail, et cetera. And then a whole package of economic development incentives, both generalized and custom that would over time allow something like the reunion center to happen. Obviously COVID has had a huge effect on a large gathering events and many of the organizations that certainly we've talked to have hit the pause button and they wait and see what, what the world looks like from, you know, people gathering again. So, you know, we will continue to talk to those folks, but a big part of this really rests with advancing a shared vision with the city and some shared kind of responsibilities or engagements of how we might move something like the reunion center forward. So next slide. Other points that we just really want to make is, you know, it has been a great honor to work with Roger and the team, you know, from when we started in August of 2017, it has truly been a collaboration. We have standing monthly meetings to talk through a range of development issues and solve problems. And again, that developer agreement has really served as a framework for those discussions. And it has been very, very productive. I will tell you, and this is not unique to Commerce City, but entitlement reviews for Commerce City have continued to get longer as more and more development has come in. And a lot of that's associated with just staffing challenges. Again, this is not unique to Commerce City. And we continue to troubleshoot and come up with creative ideas on how we support the city. And, and an example of that is third party reviews with public works that I think has been pretty successful and we will continue to explore those with the city. But it's an ongoing challenge that we all have to be cognizant of. And, and related to that is just as people leave the city, you have institutional memory loss around the deal. And so we actually spent some time this summer pulling leaders together with the city staff leaders together to start, how do we build capacity of both existing and new staff around developments like reunion, given their, their complexity? So next slide. You can go to the next slide, Jen, after this, sorry. So, you know, again, we, we kind of built the straw man just for, for discussion purposes. You know, we were hopeful that the city would, would come to a place in your oil and gas regs. And we know that that's likely going to move into Q1 of next year. But obviously the sooner the better that we get those regulations done so that we have clarity about how it's going to affect development, again, not just in reunion, but the region as a whole. And then quickly move into in Q1 around the sales tax, sales and use tax resolution, as well as the development agreement updates. And then as COVID starts to wane and we start to see return to normalcy and we get these fundamental things out of the way, we can then really turn our attention to the idea around the reunion center and the possibilities of what that might look like and what private development deals might be out there as people start to reengage in those markets. And that is it. So Jenna, I think I'm turning it back over to you for, for your piece. Thank you again on behalf of Jim and I and Bird for the opportunity to provide this overview.
Not a problem. Let me switch back over to our presentation. Hold on, I'm going to pause my share and reshare. Thank you for your patience. Okay, can everyone see the new PowerPoint presentation?
No.
How about now?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for your continued consideration on this topic. I am here to speak specifically about the request to extend the sales and use tax agreement. Most of this will be a refresher, but at the end, we will absolutely have time for discussion. So tonight I will provide a quick review of the purpose and background associated with this extension request. We will also visit the overall goals of the agreement, projects that would be funded, provide staff's recommendation and ask to receive council's direction regarding if and how we should proceed with negotiations with Oakwood. So as you all know, Oakwood Homes representatives have requested that the city extend an existing agreement to reimburse a portion of the sales and use tax generated within the development to be used by Oakwood while building certain public improvements. This agreement is currently for 33% of 3% sales and use tax and is about to come to the end of its 20-year policy life. The majority of public improvements built using this funding are normal city responsibilities. For example, the first phase of 104th Avenue whitening project was done by the reunion metro district, but otherwise would have been the responsibility of the city to construct and manage. As previously mentioned, this agreement was executed in 2001. It consolidated eight previous agreements and covered a wide scope of topics. The subsequent agreement that was entered into in 2003 supplemented the above agreement and narrowed in on sales and use tax and building permit revenue sharing. The 2003 agreement is the subject of this extension request. Again, the 2003 agreement was structured around the share of that 33% of 3% sales and use tax. So one of the questions for council tonight is that if that amount is satisfactory to you or if that amount should be negotiated. That 2003 agreement also credited road impact fees to reunion rather than the landowners. Since we already discussed the 2003 IGA expiration date and purpose of the proposed extension, we will go ahead and move to the next slide. But I would like to point out that the 2001 and 2003 agreements were included in your city council packet updated earlier today. It is important for council to note that staff has not yet finished our evaluation of the old agreements to see if they do provide a viable framework for proceeding. What that means is if council chooses to move forward with negotiating the extension, other agreements will likely need to be updated to define a path forward that reflects the desires of council. The primary goal of this agreement is to provide a funding mechanism for reunion to build public improvements that involve a significant amount of city responsibility. It allows reunion to build those public improvements on a schedule that is compatible with reunion's development rather than be subject to the city's project schedule and current staff workload. Lastly, it provides for those public improvements without the city needing to directly fund or manage the projects. This would allow our staff to focus on other priority projects. This is a map that you have all seen before, but it shows the proposed road improvements that the agreement would fund. You can see that two different segments of 112th Avenue, then Chambers Road, High Plains Parkway, Potomac Street, south of 104th, a portion of 96th Avenue, the south end of Chambers Road, and finally a portion of Landmark Road are included in the planned roadwork. I would like to highlight that the High Plains project will connect the existing Tower Road alignment to the Buckley Road alignment on the north side of 120th Avenue. Also, in addition to the road improvements, staff and Oakwood are discussing potential drainage projects that would be covered by the agreement, including O'Brien Canal relocation, Second Creek Outfall and Regional Detention, as well as Third Creek Drainage Outfall and Ragweed Draw. Here are the updated estimated costs for the various, various improvements with a total for transportation projects reaching almost $104 million, while drainage projects total approximately $48 million, which as you can see totals nearly $152 million of improvements. Another question for council to discuss and mull over this evening is whether this list of projects is acceptable or if there are other projects we should discuss. Something additional that I would like to highlight here that council has previously inquired about is that per the current IGA, the expectation is not that the city would have to owe the district the difference between eligible improvements and the amount received by the district. Since an extension of the sales and use tax agreement has been, oh, let me back up. We, we recommend extending it largely because the current one has been successful so far. And the benefit of an extension is that it focuses on specific projects that can be funded, built and managed by the reunion metro district. So for those reasons, we are requesting that we continue negotiating with Oakwood, but we absolutely want to do that in a way that reflects council's desires. With that in mind, we will of course discuss council's direction momentarily, but should you choose to direct staff to move forward, here is a preliminary timeline for proceeding. If directed, staff will continue to negotiate the extension and present a full draft agreement to city council in 2021, then the new IGA would be executed in January of 2022. So I will go ahead and stop my screen sharing so you can all see one another for the discussion, but I appreciate your time. I am available as is Roger, Director Rogers and the Oakwood team to answer any questions. Thank you.
Just as a few comments, there's going to be the need for a number of executive sessions as we go through. So number one, don't think that all of this has to be solved tonight. What we're looking for tonight is a basic direction on do we proceed with this or are you not interested?
Anybody on council have any questions for either staff or the representatives from Oakwood Homes? Council member Noble.
Thank you. I'm not entirely clear on the sales tax framework. So it's 33%, 33% of 3%, but are there boundary lines for the 3%? If the city is collecting sales and use taxes in Commerce City, is it 3% of all sales and use taxes throughout Commerce City? Or do you know where the sales and use taxes are actually coming from? I really find this very confusing.
It, it's not the entire city. It's only within the reunion development.
What do you mean the reunion development, like King Supers or houses or what?
Yes. In other words, it's both the commercial area and residential. So when a building permit is pulled for one home, 33% of 3% of the tax then goes to reunion metro district. Same thing for commercial when taxable sale occurs at King Supers, for an example. Then under the current formula of the current 2003 agreement, 33% of 3% goes to reunion. So I'm not, I don't know the history of why 3% was selected originally. I would imagine it had something to do with, you know, wanting a portion of the sales tax to come into the city to fund ongoing operations. But subsequent to the three and a half percent sales tax, we're now at four and a half percent with the additional one, one point of that four and a half percent dedicated to the 2K bond issue and ongoing operation and maintenance of 2K facilities. So again, we have not discussed, you know, should it be 33% of three and a half percent or remain at 3%? All of that needs to be discussed and worked out as we go forward.
Why would it increase by three, by a half percent right now?
Well, again, we're looking at $151 million worth of projects. That takes a lot of sales tax to, to be able to support that level of activity.
So you're, you're suggesting increasing our sales tax now by another half percent?
I am not suggesting anything. I am saying that would have to be one of the points of discussion.
How much money are we talking about of this 33% of 3% annually?
That was in a previous report. As I recall, the average over several years was a little bit over 2 million, if I recall correctly. Jenny, Jenna, do you have that number?
I'm trying to pull up the report now.
And the 1% is the tax that is the 2K. Is that the 2K?
Yes.
And that covers roads?
Roads and recreational projects, yes.
Okay. Okay. And with regard, okay, I'll leave it there on that. I won't get into the other topics right now, but I would, if it doesn't end, I think there should be concessions.
Council member Madera.
Are these funds restricted to only regional projects?
The funds that are shared with reunion?
Correct.
Currently, no, they are not. That was defined by the 2003 agreement. And so that would be a change that I would propose for the next agreement, the extension, is that we would restrict it to the list of items that was presented in, in tonight's presentation.
Okay, yeah, I definitely think that's, uh, needs to be a consideration. I mean, even the projects proposed today, there's a few on there that is questionable as to the regional benefit. You know, some of these projects can be argued that they benefit only the development. So, you know, I would, I would like to support the, the tax sharing, but I would like to see a restriction to regional projects.
Council member Alan Thomas.
Yes, thank you. I was curious too, do you, will any of these projects be part of any future HOA mill levies?
It wouldn't be HOA, it would be the reunion metro district. So again, what portion is not covered out of the reimbursement would need to be covered by the mill levy of the metro reunion metro districts.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff or for representatives of Oakwood?
I did find, actually Jenna forwarded to me the report, the last three years of 2017 to 2019, it was an average of 1.2 million per year. But again, that's the average. It's been growing each year.
Council member Noble.
Thank you very much. What, how much does the city contribute on these roads that have already been built under the previous agreement?
In the case of 112th Avenue, that's the one that I have the most familiarity with. We covered the north one half of it basically. And well, it wasn't totally in the north half because we also covered the portion next to the golf course. But it was approximately a 50/50 split. And again, reunion is on the south side of 112th Avenue and other developments were on the north side. We did have a contribution from one of the other developers to 112th Avenue, which we've now, recently I proposed that we moved that to 120th Avenue since we had gone ahead and budgeted adequately to cover the city's portion.
And then when it's completed, we have responsibility for upkeep and maintenance?
Yes, and that's the case even with most streets that are developed within a development that the city does not pay for. Metro district or the developer finances those improvements, but once they're completed, they're turned over to the city and the city then maintains them. So they become city ownership and city maintenance responsibility.
Based on council member Madera's question, was this, was 112th considered a regional road improvement?
Basically, yes, although it's a small, I'd have to defer to the public works people how they classify. We have major arterials, minor arterials, and then collector streets and that type of thing. And I don't recall what category 112th fit into, but it's not a local street. So it does serve a larger area than just the immediate neighborhood, whereas, you know, a street within a development is just serving that immediate neighborhood.
And on the roads that were on the slide earlier, it would be good to have time timelines for each of those before any further negotiation occurs? Because we don't know when those are going to happen over the 20-year period.
The only caution.
And, and yes, go ahead, go ahead.
The only caution I would give you is that timelines will depend on the rate of development. So that's a little bit outside of our, well, definitely outside of our control, but also a little tough to predict. You never know what the market is going to do.
Well, but we're giving the money annually, so there is certainty regarding the sales tax and use tax that we'll be giving back. So it would be helpful to have some certainty about when these roads would be improved because they do benefit to the community, many of them do. I would like to also point out though, that there are developments that have occurred that residents aren't necessarily supportive of. And they have been agreed to by the city apparently, but I don't think that there's quite enough input from residents regarding any of this. And that's of concern to me. So we know we had the recent experience with the new project along 112th where density was increased to 70 from 44. I noticed that the High Point Parkway will run along the homes that have already been constructed there. The fact that they'll have Tower Road in their background, in their backyard, basically, is probably something they weren't aware of when they purchased their homes. It would appear to any reasonable buyer that Tower Road was going to be the direction. And I certainly doubt that it was conveyed during the sales discussion. That's a concern to me.
There's three points there, taking the last one first. That plan was laid out many, many years ago and was always part of the master planning for reunion. So I can't speak to what notification may have occurred or not occurred, but that has always been the plan that was set out many years ago. To the second point, density is controlled by the PUD and that, you know, PUD approval originally was with city council. So I, I don't know how we would address, you know, further changes. That would be something I would have to defer to Director Rogers on, pardon me. To the first point, the revenue that is shared is also determined by the market. In other words, timing on roads is determined by, you know, the development market, but the amount of revenue that the city would share with, with the developer is also dependent on the marketplace. So the more development that occurs, then yes, there's more revenue, but also that increases the demand for public improvements. So those all have to go hand in hand, basically.
Let me go back to number two for a minute. You, the, your comment was that the city council approved this increase in density? And I have no recollection of that.
No, not this specific density issue. The original PUD was approved by The original PUD was approved by council and that's part of the original, whenever a PUD comes in, those type of things are laid out in terms of what parameters can occur. But again, I would have to defer to Director Rogers on how that actually works.
Yes, I'd like to hear from Director Rogers on that.
Thank you. Good, good evening, City Council. Thank you, Roger, and good questions, Councilmember Noble. So as Roger has stated, PUD is what controls as it relates to both dimensional and density requirements and/or limitations as it's established for various planning areas that cover reunion. In the particular planning area of question, density at the time of the fifth amendment was identified for a range between three, the twenty-four dwelling units to the acre. Now, in that, when you look at what's also prescribed as allowable or permitted by right land uses within the planning area, is a very broad section of product types that could be permitted from your single family detached, which is in the planning world is typically a low density product to a cluster home, which is semi, I'll say semi-dense, somewhere in around the six to eight dwelling units acre to where what's also permissible within that planning area of question of multifamily development, which you will find on the higher scale just because of the functionality and the form of that product type, somewhere between sixteen to twenty-four dwelling, twenty-four dwelling units to the acre. So once again, a very broad spectrum. Now, this filing, which is identified as filing thirty-seven, has on the ground reality of a single family detached and a cluster home product. Now, originally, that original filing was approved for, I'll say somewhere in the range of over four hundred and thirty-three residential lots. This amendment took forty-four of those four hundred and thirty-three lots and created additional cluster lots of thirty-two to the total number of seventy-six. So when the original filing was approved, its density was at three point two five dwelling units to the acre. Now, once again, this, this is pulling from the PUD that has a range between three to twenty-four. The original filing was at three twenty-five. The slight amendment raised the density from three point two five to three point four nine. So a slight increase of density, which was within the permissible range established with the PUD, the most recent amendment that was adopted and approved in twenty nineteen. And that this is well within what's established with the permitted use and the permitted range of density. As it relates to questions or comments about, I'll say, the community wanting to weigh in, express opinions, express concerns. Now, those concerns and those opinions can be made at the time of when we have for all of our subdivision plots have to post and send notifications out to residents within a certain radius of the property. At that time, they have to make an objection, or they have to share their comments and concerns that are tied to the approval criteria of a subdivision plot. And as at that time, based on, I'll say, the validity of those comments and those objections, we would then bring those forward to city council. I would say at this time with that plan, we did not receive comments, we did not receive objections by the time period or the notification period that was identified or the deadline that was identified for this matter to be brought for.
Did you send, we don't send notifications to an incorporated Adams County, do we?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We send it to any and all residents within three hundred feet.
Okay, all right. That's good to hear. I think that nevertheless, it is important for people to know what's going on. And I, the High Point Parkway is something that really concerns me because it's moving all of that heavy truck traffic off of and, and off of Tower. But more importantly, if we're creating a commercial and entertainment center, it should be walkable. And considering residents are already not allowed to walk across ninety-sixth because of the truck traffic, I think the same thing would apply at High Plains Parkway. So it is contrary to what we're trying to, and what Oakwood says, that they are trying to develop in that area. I'm curious, Mr. Lee, about the entertainment and recreation center. That's been talked about for some time, and a lot of people have bought in this area because they're interested in, in having that. What are we looking at there? What are you seeing as, as the future? And will it ever come to pass?
Well, I'll start with your first question. So when we presented, so as part of PUD amendment number five, we presented a conceptual plan for the reunion center, which includes or did include and continues to show a concept or series of concepts around sports venues, youth sports venues, both outdoor and indoor facilities, a food hall, for lack of a better term, called The Grange, a couple of prospective hotel sites and some entertainment related venues like a theater, bowling alley, et cetera, conceptually, all driven by the premise that you would create a sports entertainment authority. That authority would be jointly managed by the city and, and the developer to go out and seek and privately finance these venues on a case by case basis, driving visitors to the site, creating kind of a, an artificial market around visitors. Again, because you have a regional, you have four seventy, you have a Tower Road, you've got hundred and forth, a lot of ways for people to get to the site and, and, and visit. So, and given its proximity to, to the airport and to Gaylord as at least as a starting point, the idea was you build off of some of those existing assets and all of a sudden you create a very attractive location for visitors from around the country via the sports entertainment venue authority to host a range of indoor and outdoor events. So that was the concept laid out. Again, we heard loud and clear from certainly residents of reunion that there was, they certainly liked the idea, but didn't want to have to pay for it with additional taxes. So the premise of putting the authority together, going out and striking private sector deals for each of these projects on a case by case basis, and the collective impact of the projects would allow for those venues to happen. Now, I will tell you, and I, and we were equally clear, the one that's probably the hardest of all those that we talked about conceptually was the pool facility because they're incredibly expensive, both to build and maintain. That's probably the hardest one to privately finance. In fact, there are very few examples of being able to do that. But the rest have some level of validity around being able to put deals together to get them done. So the PUD amendment number five took place in twenty nineteen. It was approved by council in March of nineteen, and I think it got recorded in June of nineteen. And, you know, right away, we went to work on, on a couple of different fronts. One, talking to the city about the creation of the sports entertainment authority because council had put as a condition of that approval, needing to come back to council with financing arrangements for each of these projects. So the authority was an important aspect of taking the lead on that effort. So that that has stalled. There was a draft plan put together or a proposal put together around the creation of the authority. The other part that was also discussed extensively with city was the need for a lane swap where the outdoor venues that baseball facilities sit with a land swap with a regional park that's located off of ninety-six, essentially flipping those uses so that you could move the heavy use lighted facilities to this location away from residential areas to the south in the south part of reunion. Back conversation, we've had, we had a variety of discussions with city staff again under the previous city manager, and that has, again, that's still out there, not resolved. And then obviously, as I mentioned, I mean, COVID certainly has had a huge effect on the sports entertainment world of all levels. And, you know, there's a huge pause button with privately financing these deals for that reason alone, some level of delay. The last I would point out is we were pretty clear from, from the get-go that the first project of the reunion center was going to be the Sted High School. And we are coming to the conclusion of pulling together the private financing for that. That has been an eight-month process in a pandemic. We will hopefully close on that deal before the end of the year with construction commencing early next year, opening in the fall, first phase opening in the fall of this next year with ninth grader. So that has been our focus as a, as an anchor, a civic anchor as part of the western edge of the reunion center. And we have been almost secretly focused on getting that school up and running because we, right now, we have school age kids, high school age kids that are being bused or have to get transported out of reunion to go to a high school that's not real close. So we've had a great partnership with the district along with the city about talking through that, that school. And again, I've been secretly focused on getting that up and running from a construction perspective. And then to your last question, the last question, I, look, I, I don't know where the market's going to be. I mean, in terms of being able to pull these deals together, but I can tell you right now, they're not happening.
Thank you very much. And I would like to, to note for the record that I, with Mr. Lee and Mr. Hayes and their lobbyist last week in a call, there were some other points that I am concerned about. I'm concerned about the density of the projects. I'm concerned about the lack of parking. That's partially due to what Commerce City allows, as well as the fact that some of these units will only have one car garages. This is simultaneous with us coming up with parking regulations that will now give people tickets for parking in various places. And who knows what we'll be dealing with, with some of these projects. I'm also greatly concerned about the Natural Resources District, which is in reunion ridge. Those homes that are nearest on the circumference that Mr. Lee pointed out are four hundred feet from the wellhead, four hundred feet from the wellhead. Currently, the COGCC is saying two thousand feet from property line to property line. So this couldn't be closer if you try. I mean, it's not even, it's not even state approved. And certainly whether you are living there or aren't living there, that is far too close based upon new, new state laws. And again, I am concerned about any sort of roads that go in and when they go in and if they go in at the times that they're of most benefit to the residents. For example, residents want to see one hundred and twelfth finish so that they can get over to the recreation center or High Plains Parkway could be a problem because it, it travels so close to homes when it should be further away. I'm concerned about the Natural Resources District being placed in the center of homes when it could have been consolidated in a commercial area such as up by Tower and one hundred and twelfth. I think that we really can't go forward on negotiations until we have broader discussions about the impact of all of this. Thank you.
Any other council members with questions or comments? Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes, thank you. I'm a little confused too, because will the current agreement end in January of twenty twenty?
No, it expires, as I recall, December of twenty twenty-one. And so we need to have a new, if we're moving forward, we need to have a new agreement in place by the time January of twenty twenty-two rolls around.
Okay. So will there be no more shareback with the old agreement?
Once the old agreement expires, then no, there would not be any additional shareback unless we extend the agreement or, you know, put a new agreement in place.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I do have a couple of comments. Roger, you mentioned that timeline for these road projects would be based on development. I think that that's an unfortunate statement because I think every one of those projects needs to be done now. Not ten years from now, five years from now, three years from now. These are all projects that have been identified that quite honestly needed to be done years ago. We have ninety-sixth Avenue, which is overutilized and, and underdeveloped. You know, one hundred and twelfth Avenue continues to be, I mean, great, we're celebrating phase one is done, but there are two other phases that haven't been done yet. Then there is absolutely zero timeline on when those phases are going to be completed, especially the one that was promised years ago whenever people voted for the one cent sales tax increase that they continue to pay for day in and day out, that one hundred and twelfth Avenue would be done, but previous city councils decided not to proceed on that agreement. So, you know, hearing that we don't know when these projects will be done because it'll be based on development, that makes it a little bit harder to say, okay, here's our blank check. You go ahead and keep the money and we'll hope that they get done whenever they're supposed to be done. Yeah, I have a lot of concerns, especially a comment that I just heard that the reunion center probably isn't going to happen. You know, I was looking back on September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, the Biz Now Journal posted an article about the reunion center, talking about how wonderful this was going to be for the community, the plans, including The Grange and Authentic Market Food Service Hall. And, yeah, it doesn't look like that's going to happen now because for some reason or another, we're not progressing on whatever plans need to take place in order to make that happen. So once again, it's, you know, promise to give me the money, but we're not necessarily going to follow through with what's actually being said that we're going to do. So I have a lot of concerns over this and I look forward to future conversations regarding it. Any other comments, questions?
Well, one comment I would have, Mayor, is that it takes a lot of money to build roads. And until the money is there, we can't build them. When I did a presentation regarding the long-range financial plan, and I'm trying to find it back to pull it up, at that point, if I remember correctly, I laid out a way to fund everything. And when I say everything, we're, we're talking about over a billion dollars worth of infrastructure that needs to be built by the time the city is fully built out. When I laid that out, I was able to identify ways to fund everything except about a hundred million, if I recall correctly. And that assumed that this one hundred and fifty-one million that we're talking about tonight would be financed through a joint agreement with reunion. And so if this joint agreement does not happen, then we're looking at over two hundred million that we have to finance in some other way. One option is that if you don't want to proceed with extending the agreement with reunion metro district, then we would need to basically dedicate that same amount of money towards capital improvements. Another option is that we ask the NIGID residents to approve using existing tax revenues that come in to fund ongoing projects. Actually, it probably will take a combination of those two things to be able to fund the projects that are left. So I would offer that to you for your consideration as you think about, you know, do you want to extend a partnership with the reunion metro district or not? There's a significant amount of public improvements that have to be funded some way, somehow. And, you know, I felt my responsibility to give you a roadmap. In a couple of years, it won't be my problem. And I, I don't mean to make that sound nasty. It's just a fact of life that I will be retired in a couple of years. And so someone needs to keep working on figuring out a road And so someone needs to keep working on figuring out a roadmap to fund a billion dollars worth of public infrastructure. And that takes a lot of money to do that. So that would be my only comment regarding all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. And I do remember the presentation that you gave and, and that is true, you know. But one of the things that's very difficult is we have to remember that reunion is a piece of the city. And a lot of resources are tied up in the Community Development Department in order to approve permits, in order to do reviews, and then to refund that money back to a metro district whenever that's taking resources away from projects that need to be done in the core part of the city as well, is very difficult to think about. And I think that that's something that also has to be considered is, you know, what are we losing by giving money away from the city that could be spent on maybe another permit technician, maybe another individual that can help us in order to get some of these projects that need to be advanced in the core part of the city done as well? So I think that that truly needs to be looked at holistically. That although, yes, this is great, this is a funding mechanism that may help. But, you know, show me the success that we've had in the last twenty years of these projects from rebating these sales tax and then tell me that that outweighs everything else that is not being done in the core part of the city. And, and I think that you would be hard pressed to truly find that. We can celebrate, like I said, one phase of one hundred and twelfth being done. It's a beautiful road, looks great, but that's one phase of a project that still has a lot of work to be done and still doesn't have a lot of funding assigned to it to get it done. So I think that this is something that's going to require a lot of conversations. And I think that it's going to require a lot more details that are probably structured with specific timelines and specific actions that need to be done in order to facilitate having an agreement like this. The emptiness, lack of better words, emptiness, the the ability to just have an agreement without preset defined timelines and payments and things like that, I think does not serve the city in its best interest. And I think that would be hard pressed to support that. So I think any advancement going forward, if it were to garner my support, would require specific timelines on when things are going to be done, what the dollar values are going to be and how we're going to make sure that that is in the best interest of all of Commerce City, not just the Northern Range. Councilmember Hurst?
Yeah, I just. So, you know, I, I think we would definitely have some negotiations, discussions about what is to move forward. But I also think that the area that sits in reunion would be brightened without this master development and without the plans that have gone in place to, to develop the money spent to develop the infrastructure that we all utilize on a daily basis in the Northern Range. So Commerce City didn't have the money to build the, the infrastructure that is here today. And without continuing to build out to our, you know, projected twenty-five-year growth, we don't have the money to get there either. And the money we do have, we're passing it on to General Improvement District, which is essentially another metro district. And so it's one way or the other, we're going to pay for it that way. And the people who move into this area are going to have to pay for that from a tax, tax payback plan, you know, through your, through your property taxes. And so to me, it's actually the way we have the money upfront to be able to get this done when it's ready to be built with the development going in next to it. Otherwise, we'd have development going in and no funding to, to build the amenities that are necessary to make that, that flow appropriately within traffic. And so, you know, one hundred and twelfth is a feeder. But if you don't have that feeder, your arterial becomes clogged and your secondary arterioles become clogged off of that. And so it, it, you know, regional, you know, regional projects in the transportation side of things start at a very micro level with feeder roads that are coming out of main neighborhoods. And, and that's exactly what the one hundred and twelfth project has been so far, is it's pulling traffic off of our main corridor, one hundred and fourth, by giving a diversionary option. And so, you know, to me, it just, we have to look at it as opportunities there too, to build on time and not, you know, and on the schedule with development. Because I know some people think that we can, you know, build all these projects on our own through our own funding sources. But I highly disagree with that just from the availability of funds and how we would balance that moving forward. So, you know, to me, maybe, maybe the agreement that was signed twenty years ago is not perfect. And we, you know, we make, we make those changes as, you know, modernized to our needs of what's happening today. But, you know, taking on that infrastructure built out on our own doesn't seem to be something that we're prepared to do in the first place. And I think there's also ways that, you know, and talk about efficiency improvements. I think there's ways that we can continue to look for that as part of this program moving forward. When you're approving a ton of, of applications and a ton of permits, you know, there, there are, there are definitely efficiencies to be gained through technology that are out there right now that I know we're not utilizing yet. And so I think there's discussions around that that could be happened with this too. So we aren't allowing one development to kind of take over and kind of run the, the whole office that's approving permits. So no, I, I think, I think this is definitely ripe for a lot, lot deeper discussion in detail. But I think moving forward with negotiations is something that I could give you.
Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo a lot of what Councilmember Hurst said. I agree that I can get on board with continued negotiations to extend the agreement. Surely there's some efficiencies to be gained and some improvements to be made, you know, for the current time and what's, what's the right type of agreement to move forward. But I'm definitely on board with moving forward. I would say I do agree with the mayor. I think it would be critical to see, I, I understand you can't put specific dates down for specific projects and when they'll be completed. But I think it would be really helpful to see some sort of a timeline, an estimation of the funds and how they would be used, when they would be used, certainly with room for changes along the way. But I think that would be helpful for me, especially in, in speaking with constituents about where that money's going and what it'll be used for and when.
Councilmember Hurst?
Apologize, I thought my ear went down when I spoke last time.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to reports. Thank you, everybody, for your time this evening. Lots of good information, lots of things to consider moving forward. Mr. Tinklenberg, report?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to let council know that Public Works Department was successful in applying for a grant. That would be for the area around the RTD station. And it would be for further improvements to Colorado Boulevard in that area between Seventieth and Seventy-second. And it's a two-point, I want to say two-point-seven million dollar grant. I should have looked that up before reporting, but it will be over the next several years and we will need to come up with matching money. One hundred thousand in the coming year, twenty twenty-one, and then additional money, approximately five hundred and some thousand in twenty twenty-two. So we'll need to incorporate that into our, our capital budget. But the good news is that we received a significant grant. So wanted to let you know about that. Other than that, really nothing else to report at this point. Thank you.
Excellent news. Thank you for the update and thank you for everybody that applied for the grant and secured those funds for us. Are there any other council members that have a report to give? Councilman, what do you want?
My hand function's not working, mayor. Thank you. I know that I just met with Oakwood last week and nineteen oh six and met with Adelante about the Office of Financial Empowerment. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Noble?
I don't know if this is considered a report, but I was driving down one hundred and fourth and have been noticing ground being moved around by the church. And I was under the impression that we had another vote coming to us about the six-story cell tower that's going, that we did a rezoning on. Was there not another discussion we were going to have or has that been administratively approved?
I don't have enough familiarity, so I'll refer to Director Rogers.
Thank you, Roger. Great question, council member. You are correct that you have taken final action on the rezoning that's subject to the church. Obviously, that went from, I believe, agriculture to C-two zoning in which enabled then the cell tower to be not administratively approved, but to be approved through our Board of Appeals in which those applications are brought forward per the Statutory Construction of Our Land Development Code.
Okay, I have to say I'm really, really concerned about that because a six-foot tall tower is something that needed to have the community around that area participating in because it's not just a tower, it's actually enclosed space. Plus, the church intends to put a cross on it. We are in the middle of Hanukkah. I don't think that it is appropriate to have a religious symbol on the tower. And I am distressed beyond words that it didn't come back to us because that was what we were told at the time, that we would vote on this zoning now, but this would come back to us and it did not come back to us.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd have to go back and obviously look at the, the tape of the night with respect to the comments that were made to you at the public hearing with, with respect to the conversation and comment around the design around the Monopole or the Public Communications Tower. Obviously, there's certain messaging that is protected and obviously I would rely on our city attorney's office to expound upon that. And then lastly, I agree that community engagement, being able to receive the opinion, the feedback and the comments from our community is obviously very important, not only to the council, but also important to us as a staff as it relates to any application that's required to go before a decision-making body, that being the Board of Appeals, the Derby Board, that being Planning Commission or City Council. We are required to follow a notification process of adjoining property owners, make them aware of an item being held so that they can participate as part of the public process.
So are you saying there's anything that could be done at this point? I, I'm not clear on what you just said.
So I was just kind of outlining, ma'am, that we do have a community engagement or a public engagement process that we do require for any, any polishing of applications or items that are going to a decision-making body like yourselves or Planning Commission or in that case, the Board of Appeals.
Is there anything that can be done now, Mr. Rogers?
No, ma'am.
Even with regards to the, I guess you would call it signage on the tower?
To that point, I would, and I'm going to look at Robert to this to make sure that I don't put my foot in my mouth. But obviously, certain messaging as it relates to religious assemblies are protected by law and Robert may be able to expound upon that.
I'm not familiar enough with this case to really talk about it if it's on private property. I have to look at what our code says. I, but I, I don't, yeah, I, it's, there's not enough here to, to really talk about what a potential outcome could be and whether anything could be done or needs to be done. I've, I've seen nothing that suggests a violation of any law or zoning, but have not investigated it to be sure.
I can weigh in from the standpoint, I know in general that churches often do this where they will enter into a lease with, with one of the cell tower companies. And they'll often hide the equipment in a crocs. And so it's on their property, that's their prerogative. So that's what I'm aware of.
I don't believe that that was how the discussion occurred at the time and it definitely would have influenced my vote. I know this was part of my interest. So I would like more information on this at our next meeting, please.
I know this was heard by the Board of Adjustment. There was a question that was raised by one of the Board of Adjustment members regarding the symbol that would be placed on the tower. And that question was dismissed by the legal member that was there for that meeting that we are not there for the purpose of reviewing legal symbols like that. We are there to only determine whether or not to approve the height of the tower itself. And that's where that conversation was left.
Mr. Mayor, would we not have signage rules in, in Commerce City?
That would be part of the Land Development Code and then that would also go into First Amendment and that would go into a whole host of things that Mr. Sheasley and Mr. Hader would be the experts on answering whether or not a city could deny the ability to put such a symbol on a tower like that. Like I said, the, the question was raised during the Board of Adjustment hearing and it was quickly moved off of that as that was not the purpose of the hearing. The purpose of the hearing was to approve the height of the tower for that facility, which is what was granted during the Board of Adjustment hearing.
I appreciate that and I would still like to hear Mr. Sheasley's comment regarding this at the next meeting. I don't expect him to have an answer to that.
Well, and I, and I don't know that I will at the next one either. I will note that the staff, that when council considered the zoning, it was on a zoning question and the Board of Adjustment was limited to those questions. There is a sign code in the city, how that applies to the specific issue. I do not know. The staff report at the time of the zoning did indicate that there would be a bell tower constructed in this area, but that's not the issue that was present at the time of the zoning. So I will, I'll check and see if there's any more information we can provide.
Thank you kindly.
Any other council members wish to give a report? Seeing none, we will have a very quick evening that is actually on schedule with everything. I do not have a report to give this evening, so would like to wish everybody a good night, an early night and a good week. And we'll see you next week for the last city council meeting, official city council meeting of twenty twenty. So thank you for your attendance and watching and we will see you next week.